Good evening, April 20th, we found the trail. I recently served as the Chair of the Multicultural Committee and I was speaking on Agenda Item 5C1B. A couple of weeks ago, I was interviewed for reappointment to the Multicultural Committee. At the beginning of that conversation, I was asked about my racial identity and referred to using a term rooted in slavery and racial classification. It had no place in the interview for public service. Questions about the actual work of the committee came only after my having to explain why the term was used, the term used was problematic, and after unsolicited reflections about racial identities of other students this council grew up with, as well as her family structure and her Christian values. I felt disconnected from, I felt this was disconnected from the role and responsibilities of serving the Multicultural Committee, and it raised real concerns about how interviews are conducted, who gets asked what, and the power of elected officials. After sharing what occurred in the interview with the town council, I received a message from Councilor Vandover that read in part, "I did not know the word I used was offensive, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Your explanation made me think about my own grandchildren who are multiracial. I will do better in the future." I appreciate that Councilor Vandover responded, but from apology was also called accountability, and from accountability, action. Putting the word aside, it was about the structure, tone, and content of the interview itself, only after Councilor Vandover repeatedly asked or said, "I don't want any of that D I E as part of the committee."
Point of order, Mr. President?
It seems that the only thing that's listed on the agenda is now view of like, is a review of the liaison appointments, not the contact of one-on-one conversations or emails about the review of liaison appointments. And I think this is a breach too far. This could be in line with the second citizens' comments, but not the first one for agenda items only.
I'll defer to our solicitor, item 5C1B refers to the liaison appointments and this is the conduction of the liaison appointments.
So, as the other matters of order, Bill, turn your mic off, please. As the other matters of order, the question raised by Councilor Ayello is, as order, it's up to the Chair to rule on the order, and the question can then, if it's challenged, as it always is, it's a motion second and put to a vote. That's the process.
The Chair votes that this is part of the agenda. The Chair votes that this is part of the agenda, it was specific, it was the agenda-setting meeting to allow this incident to be discussed, and it was put on the agenda to, in this fashion, to break this. So the Chair votes not in favor of the point.
You feel that decision because what you discussed in the agenda-setting meeting is not what's on the agenda. The agenda is review of liaison appointments. I'm not saying you can't speak or anybody else can't speak, but at the second citizens' comments where it's all different things, this is an agenda item. What do you and whoever else discuss that?
I already ruled on this. Did you want, did you want a discussion? Did you feel it?
Yeah, we have a discussion. Yes, I feel it.
Who seconded it?
Oh, seconded, and I want a discussion.
Discussion.
Bill's right, as usual, you don't have a clue on the agenda. But, putting that aside, you're in comments, putting that aside, why don't we get this out of the way in the first citizens' comments, Bill, rather than have everybody sit around and wait for the second?
Point of order, Mr. Peter, you aren't being insulting to your, I know you're good at it, but you don't have to be insulting.
Well, get back to my point, I think it would be easier just to do this now, though everybody's here for this tonight, and if we have everybody to sit around waiting for the second citizens' comments, it doesn't belong with the first citizens' comments, but I say we wave it and let everybody speak on that. That's my opinion. We have a discussion, Councilor.
Just to mention, the letter is under Section 9 of the county reports because it was asked and sent to all the councilors to be put on the agenda, so with my understanding, anything under town council or town management course can still be discussed in the first citizens' comments.
I understand you're wrong, it's that second citizens' comments, but it's all right, but still a lot of talk in the first citizens'.
So, we've had a discussion, there's no vote by the body to a rule, the Chair's decision. Councilor Ayello?
Communication reports are not part of the agenda, the citizens already confirmed that several times. So, no, I'm not saying they can't speak, but not during the first citizens' comments, and then we have to do business of the council, business of the town first, so.
So, we're not going to vote for this, right?
So, all right, so if we're voting yes, what do we know?
You're voting the Chair.
All right, so we're not voting no, all right, so yes.
No. No. I said, let's discuss it. No.
The Chair votes no as well, so we can continue with the presentation, I believe there's at least three minutes with a discussion.
We will continue. Pardon me? Questions on the actual work of the committee came only after my having to explain why the term used was problematic, and after unsolicited personal reflections about racial identities of other students that she grew up with, as well as her family structure and her Christian values. I felt disconnected from the role and responsibilities of serving this multicultural committee. It raised real concerns about how interviews are conducted, who gets asked what, and how power of elected officials is exercised. After sharing what occurred in the interview with the town council, I received a message from Councilor Vandover that read in part, "I did not know the word I used was offensive, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Your explanation made me think about my own grandchildren who are multiracial. I will do better in the future." I appreciate that Councilor Vandover responded, but from apology was from accountability and from accountability, action. Putting the word aside, it was about the structure, tone, and content of the interview itself, only after Vandover repeatedly asked, repeatedly said, "I don't want any of that D I E as part of the committee," she did ask me about the actual work of the committee and what the committee was hoping to achieve. For someone so vocal about that awful D I E, what is, I was left wondering why my racial identity and her experiences of diversity growing up were a major part of the conversation. Councilor Vandover admitted what she said, but neither she nor the council has addressed the deeper issues. What is the process for interviewing candidates for town committees? Is there a protocol? Are all candidates interviewed and treated equally? And if not, why not? What I'm asking for is simple and necessary. First, town council should adopt a clear and consistent process for committee appointment interviews. No more one-on-one interviews and no more improv. Next, the town should invest in a personal and professional development for all council members, training on lawful, respectful, and effective public engagement, especially in official capacities. I want to thank town council, Neemire, I want to thank you for your swift manner and attention as a multicultural committee liaison, that truly mattered to me. Councilor Keely, thank you for your support. Councilor Shlaba, thank you for your note, I really appreciated it. I also want to thank my multicultural committee colleagues, the dedication and the work that we're doing is very meaningful to me, and your presence here means a lot, as well as other committee members. I really hope that this moment is when we actually can move forward, apology to accountability and action that puts measures in place to ensure that this kind of incident does not happen again to community members who are willing to serve the town.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Serra.
Good evening, folks. Jeff Serra, 64 Shore Drive. I too am speaking to address Agenda Item 5C1B and to express me concern and outrage regarding the unacceptable conduct of a councilor during a recent committee renewal interview. Councilor Vandover's use of a racist slur during that interview was unbelievably appropriate. It was profoundly offensive and damaging. The term she used recalls a long and painful legacy of dehumanization of black people. The U.S. Census abandoned the term over a century ago, reflecting its deeply rooted offensiveness and its unsuitability in any modern context. That a city councilor in official capacity use such a word while interviewing a community volunteer is both ethically and legally alarming. The language reflects an abuse of authority. It created an environment that not only personally distressed the volunteer, but also potentially exposed the town to legal liability. While Councilor Vandover has issued an apology, it falls short of addressing the broader transgression, a violation of public trust, a misuse of official authority, and an act that undermines the values of equity and dignity. Westlake citizens deserve better. I urge the council to respond seriously by taking the following actions. Censor Councilor Vandover for her conduct. Permanently remove her from the appointments committee. Suspend her liaison appointments until she successfully completes mandatory professional training in cultural sensitivity and ethical governance. Issue a formal apology to the injured party, acknowledging the harm done and affirming the town's commitment to respect and inclusivity. This moment presents a chance for the council to demonstrate leadership and to commit to systemic improvements. And I urge you to establish mandatory professional training for all council members in cultural competency, anti-discrimination practices, and appropriate conduct when engaging as a government official with the public. Develop a clear, meaningful, sound, and respectful interview policy for all community volunteer interviews. Craft it in consequence to a legal council to ensure thorough and consistent treatment of all volunteer applicants for committee appointments. Councilor Vandover's behavior has compromised the public trust. In this moment, no decisive transparent action can begin to restore that trust. I urge you to hold yourselves and one another to the highest standards of public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Flanagan?
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate everybody's applause and stuff, but let's remind everybody that this is a council meeting and a whole lot of the council.
Thank you. Mr. Flanagan?
Thank you, and it's Tim Flanagan, the divorcee of Roy Big Westlake, and I'm speaking tonight as a member of the town of Westlake's Multicultural Committee. I speak as a member of the town of Westlake's Multicultural Committee, I want to bring the following statement on behalf of the committee. It has been an honor for the members of this committee to serve our town and promote the whole cultural richness of Westlake. To accomplish this work, we are committed to deepen our understanding of the perspectives of our neighbors and come from a wide range of cultural traditions. At our monthly meetings, we learn from one another during frank, open, and sometimes difficult conversations, and we extend this word through events such as the recent Neighbor Day celebration, which engaged several hundred neighbors across Westlake. At our July 9 meeting, we learned the details of reappointment interview and reached the town council conducting the interview, questioned and raised the one of our committee members, and used a racist slur to label it. After discussing this situation, the Multicultural Committee unanimously passed a motion to condemn questions about racial identity as part of any formal interview for membership on this or any other town committee. We recognize the honor caused to both a member of our committee and to our town. Committee membership must represent a diverse range of perspectives, attracting candidates for the work of town committees will be even more challenging depending on your response to this issue. We appreciate that the council had decided to discuss this matter further. As a committee, we are focused on the steps you can take to avoid another situation like this and ensure that all citizens of Westlake, regardless of their identity and the aspect of identity, feel welcomed, bound, and may even be inspired to volunteer on a town committee. To that end, we request that consider the following three points as we move forward. First, there should be at least two members of the appointments committee present during all interviews. Second, some members of multicultural committee have served for two terms and have never been interviewed, while others have been interviewed. We ask that a consistent policy be put in place for all town committee membership interviews. And third, the appointments committee and councilors should approve questions for all interviews. Your discussions on this topic will not be easy or comfortable, but they are necessary. We hope that our committee can serve as a model, respectful conversation, sincere interest in understanding multiple perspectives, and increasing awareness of the social and economic benefits of multiculturalism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lori Whitehall, the requested topic is, just to confirm, is it item 9E imminent? So that would be on the next agenda. The next.
I thought it was just discussed that correspondence, but we talked about the first one.
It was already ruled that that's not part of the grand agenda correspondence.
Okay, so you can change it to item 5B1, I can, my letter addresses there as well. Thank you. Lori Whitehall, 1251 Park Road, Westlake. I guess I'm clarified for some people that I inherit as a private citizen tonight, and that's a good place for me to start. You'll receive my letter that was dated July 17, and here's the behind that letter and everything that I said in it. I want to ask you, you got my email from my personal address with my home address listed, and no mention of my role as a school committee member, did anybody really think I was sending that as my, from my official role in representing the school district? I don't think so, but that's exactly where Councilor Keely went with her response to me. She very rudely and condescendingly replied to me, scolding me for not making that distinction clear in my email, and I'm not sure if she thinks she is, but I took exception to the tone, and I don't think that she should be responding to anybody in the community with that attitude, it's completely inappropriate. Meanwhile, this is the same town councilor who uses her title as a Westlake town councilor, but adds the phrase "writing in a personal capacity" next to it in emails, calling to action all of her comrades to come up here tonight, calling to create a circus at our meetings, calling people to rally from all over South County, to protest in Westlake, and also with sending intimidating emails to local business owners because she doesn't agree with the cause that they've opened up their private space to support. In the letter from Ms. Dinwiddie to you all, she references a racial slur that Councilor Vandover used in their conversation, and I really want you and everybody to just think about honestly, if, when you heard that, if you thought, "Oh gee, I didn't know," or "I wasn't sure if that was a racial, a racist term," because honestly, that's what I thought, maybe I'm not up on all the lingo, but Ms. Vandover acknowledged that she was, used some inappropriate language, she apologized, and that's just not enough. This group is here to, this group of kindness, inclusion, and compassion are here to only punish and make her pay, and it's very hypocritical. Councilor Keely went to Facebook to apologize on July 7, she went to Facebook and apologized for using the term "bottom of the totem pole." She says, "I haven't been able to stop replaying it in my head, when did totem pole become offensive?" I mean, at some point, all of this language, police, and all of these terminologies, we have to get past it. She also says that every day is an opportunity to reflect, unlearn, and grow, but she won't allow Ms. Vandover that same opportunity, she just wants her punished. So there's an opportunity for them to get rid of someone with a different political view, and they're jumping all over it, "This is nothing but intentional," seems one of their favorite phrases, "It's an intentional and orchestrated attempt to taking down a political opponent." Also, let's keep in mind that this conversation was an interview for the multicultural, a phone call for an interview for the multicultural. So, to say that, bringing up, you know, anybody who knows Ms. Dinwiddie honestly knows her history, her identity and her entire high career history has been based on the fact that she's biracial, and that she comes from a transracial, adopted family situation. So, when asked about her multicultural background, and it was everywhere in her application for the committee, suddenly, everybody is so offended by this, I mean, it's just kind of ridiculous. So as I said in my letter, I wish that we had actionists on the county council and not activists. If Ms. Keely sees a problem with the interview process, as many others have stated tonight, take some action and fix it. There's no need for this, which, you're a town councilor and you can make the changes to make a difference. Instead, you're invoking this activism to bring all of these people out to protest and clap and make him a circus in our local town politics. Enough is enough, a lot of us in the town have had just enough of this, and it's time to put a stop to it. I want to close by stating that in my opinion, Ms. Vandover is an excellent town councilor, she's always prepared and knowledgeable on the agenda items, she sticks to her guns, she stands for what she believes in, and she represents a large contingency of the Westlake community, and I thank her for that. She deserves to not be censored, she deserves to keep her appointments on the subcommittees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Tom Telly.
I'd also like to say, there's one on the agenda, please fight for Fort Road, and I'd like to say to Rose Bandorm that with little I know of you is that you're a hard fighter for, you know, the rest of us, and I appreciate it, and, you know, I can't imagine you intentionally offended anybody, and, you know, people need to realize that we all make mistakes, and if you used a word that offended somebody, I'm sure it wasn't intentional, and people should recognize that. That's all I want to say. One other thing, you know, when you look at yourself in the mirror, you know, ask yourself if what you're doing was right, the town, or a few people who are going to be wealthy enough to have a house on the beach, and then look into yourself and say, "What's the right thing to do?", and please try and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ben Weber.
My name is Morris Vine. I live here in Westlake, and for most of my 62 years, I have lived here, like all Eric's sons who disappear for a while and we come back. So I guess I'm hitting the trifecta tonight, 5C1B, AD12, and 9C. I can always come back for a second bite of the apple on 9C if I have to. Born and raised here in Westlake, great grandson of people who came here from Sicily, Denmark, Canada, I'm proud to say that my grandfather's father was a half-Irish, half-Irish, half-Lotus U. We all grew up with that. And you know what, what people say about us, how it affects us is our choice. People can say things, it's how we listen. Are we hearing, or are we just listening, waiting for our chance to throw the outcome out there? Why do we rush? We have one side of the discussion, and everybody is ready to head for the block, ready to head for the gallows. No inquiry, no discussion, no judicial review, nothing. And over what largely seems to be a misunderstanding is totally blown out of proportion. I have conducted personnel interviews for small businesses in the public sector and in private. I've conducted interviews at the national level for large organizations and for the Department of Defense. And if I had an application come to me with terminology that I might not understand, I would reach somebody at the benefit of the doubt and say, "What is a transracially adopted person?" Somebody put that here, I'll be interviewer, I'm going to ask questions. And if because of my background, I ask something that's very, very common for me because of where I grew up, I had many friends, I'll say it, a lot of us in high school, in college, and even where I went to school to be a minister. But that's surprising.
Point of order, I'm going to use some racist slurs.
I used, I said, sorry.
Hence racist slurs, well.
Not to me.
Don't use magic words.
When I see some of the things that kind of led to today, it's a little disturbing. Emails trying to coerce people into action to say things, I don't have to read you some of this because some of you already spoke those self-saying words largely without change. Perhaps the author believes that she has qualified immunity for putting something like that up. Maybe not. I don't know if it's part of the system, but having been subject to it in part, and I tried to serve here in town, I can understand a little bit. So I would hope that there is breaks to the reply before there's this rush to judgment. Cooler heads prevail, and we follow some sort of law of decorum, or someone that possibly made this step using words that she did not understand, I wouldn't have understood it as offensive to another person. Do we have to have ethics training? Well, yeah, here it says they don't get any, but we know that the elected officials here in town do have some. So there's a lot of stuff here that I'm a little confused on, but I'll leave that where it is for now. AD12, what race? Yes, the AWP was signed by a guy. Yes, on Marbury versus Madison, any law that is reflective of the Constitution is in itself a melon. And our system is going to be subject to several lawsuits, and also at that point, the Department of Justice on Friday issued a directive to all of their attorneys, their field people, and issued a request to the Supreme Court to begin to discipline subordinate states and also subordinate district courts of appeal, and Circuit Court of Appeals to overturn many states' laws where they have these unjust, unfair, unconstitutional regulations against people's individual liberties. I would suggest that we learn and look at all of these things before we decide that we are not going to let, just on the list of terms, if I can have 10 seconds.
You're going to come back to the other item anyway, so.
Will I be allowed to speak on the second item a second time with 10 seconds? I know you're saying, give me 10 seconds.
Any favor with 10 seconds?
Yeah, yes, we're allowed to, it's the summarize, it's 10 seconds to summarize and finish up, finish the sentence. On this particular.
Four, four, three.
Thank you. On this particular item, the subject of the resolution was not as the population we were going to make a splendid gesture with the finger on one hand towards the governor and say, "We are not going to do this, we intend to fully resist." And what we're saying is going on record is saying, "This is unfair, it's unjust, it's unconstitutional, and you need to take a look at this," as have so many other towns and states around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin Holder.
Kevin, 17-yard drive. It's fantastic to be here on the side of that, sir.
I envy you.
Signers, we're just like. No, I'm here today because we have a basic disagreement right now. There was an interview that was conducted by a councilor of a member, the chairperson of the Multicultural Committee. In the way it was conducted, I have concerns with for three different reasons. First reason is that it was insulting. Now, with this council, I've been up here, we have had a history of insulting behavior towards members of the public, especially members of our boards. towards members of the public, especially members to our boards of our board committees. It's the kind of thing that just, it just drives me crazy. Without mentioning any of the other pieces of what we're talking about here, it just drives me crazy that we can treat people who volunteer for the town council like that, even if it is unintentional. Second part of it is potentially illegal. You open up the town to potential action from somebody in the EOC or someone else. When you use race as a descriptor during an interview, you're going to be voting on this appointment at some time in the future. And when you vote on that appointment, this, everything that happens at this meeting, everything that's been put forth, email and text, everybody is going to see that and have their own opinion and shape about what it means, about whether or not you have bias towards this candidate or that you're using some kind of racial amplification when you actually eventually make that vote. And that makes it a really untenable situation because people do not know what influenced you. And it's always going to be a matter of death. And if the vote happens and April Dinwiddie is not confirmed for some reason, then there's areas for potential action. And so, we need to ensure, and many people have spoken very eloquently about the need for process and to make sure we understand why questions are asked, to make sure they're asked evenly across all the candidates. And that brings me to the third point, that I don't think this interview should have happened in this way. I was a formerly chair of the appointments committee. We never conducted interviews that were either not in front of the full council or in front of the appointments committee as a body. And it's my personal opinion that is the best way to do business because otherwise you'd make too much chance. You have too many people's opinions, who said what, who said the other thing. It keeps it professional and it also keeps it in the public eye. I think there are potential open meetings, violation of ramifications for having one-on-one interviews that are not within the whole category. You need to take care of yourselves as councillors and protect yourselves and that's not the way to do it. There's going to be a lot said at this meeting. We just heard from a gentleman who said everything he wanted to say and let us know exactly who he is out loud. I don't want this to be a forum for us to come and attack each other over this issue. We want to have education. We want people to understand the language was not acceptable. I think we all know that by now. But we also want to understand a way to go forward with education for the council. We need to figure out how we can get past this without turning it to something bigger than it is not. Please, please, let's work with us. Let's work together to make this thing, to make this thing a learning movement because there are so many people and so many of us in this town who are still trying to kind of fight for our place in it. There's a lot of people who have never experienced racialized language tourism. Some people can struggle it off. Some people cannot. And, I mean, we're not in a place where all of us can dictate what is, what is the best. We are not trying to, we're not trying to be offensive to anybody. We're trying to do the, excuse me, do the will of the government. We're trying to educate these candidates. So, again, thank you all. Please consider having all these meetings happen in person and making sure that you have either in front of the council or in the appointments committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Daly LaBelle.
Jonathan Daly LaBelle, Twenty-Two South Street. I actually want to make a comment related to town solicitor. I don't think it's actually on the agenda, so maybe I'll hang in till the end of the meeting, but ever since, I'm probably going to go home and maybe just watch some of this from home. I just want to, again, a few weeks ago, I just want to speak a little bit more about this resolution that's looking to, I guess now oppose the new state law that bans assault weapons. So, just like quick information, people probably have seen polls, but Moms Demand Action put some information together and there's been studies that show that there would be seventy percent fewer mass shooting deaths if the national assault ban's weapon had stayed in effect. Just think about that before you vote. Sixty-four percent, this doesn't change specifically just about Westerly, but in Rhode Island, sixty-four percent of Rhode Islanders support the ban. Eighty-eight percent of Democrats support the ban. Fifty-seven percent of independents support the ban. That's the most recent poll. There's been a lot of polls in recent years where the numbers are similar. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, we know Westerly supports Democrats. We all went to the town council to see that. And we also look at federal races that Westerly specifically supports Democrats. So, don't get up with any fuzzy type smokescreens. And various bills, courts, we don't know, Supreme Court got stats unjustly. So, we have a very stacked Supreme Court that's built to the right, very in the stand-up, a lot of it's through an unjust process. But there are federal people's courts that have upheld bans and we don't know what the Supreme Court will do. So, I think we should just consider this on the merits of, you know, what might happen in the future. And also, you know, people who are talking about supporting Constitution, Second Amendment, you know, they're really not that interested right now in supporting new process, supporting civil liberties and civil rights. So, you know, a lot of the people who are, you know, they say they're most for the Constitution. They love the Constitution. They tuck it in their pocket everywhere they go. They put it on their pillow at night. You know, I don't know what they're doing with this Constitution, okay? But when it comes out with the power that they have with the president that we have who clearly is against the Constitution, then we don't care about the Constitution. So, you know, factor that in, in a democratic town, to people who are, you know, Republican and really are against the Constitution, it's just not logical. So, thank you if you can consider that. Yeah, and I think, you know, with the homes, you know, maybe I have to start even considering, you know, can people who own second homes, if they're not just snowbirds, they own all these multiple properties, maybe you've got to tax them differently. Maybe, maybe it's not just related to this rental registry and, you know, come up with some rules there. Like maybe we just have to, we have to start looking at housing differently because didn't we afford to live in these communities? Rhode Island, getting priced, Westerly's bad. But even you go to other parts of Rhode Island that are fully happening, people are getting priced better. So, it's just, it's a larger conversation. Westerly should do its part. You know, please consider that. Yeah, this has been a lot of pocket recall. It's been some pocket recall in town. So, maybe people should be talking about recall. You know, it seems popular to talk about recall. Maybe we should be talking about recall. I don't, you know, I don't know. People seem like that. Yeah, so, you know, we're looking for race. Some people are looking for race for people who don't know the lingo, who use inappropriate terms. I mean, there's, you know, there's some race. But again, the people who are talking about race are supporting a man and a party who are the most, who's like the most offensive, derogatory person that he just is looking to destroy everybody personally and through policy, through everything. So, therefore he is, but then it's convenient in some other way. Oh, this person is spoken. Can we have some grace? Can we be nice? Meanwhile, I mean, they're supporting a convicted villain. Obsolesced, maybe. Actually, with all that conspiracy theories that are around, I feel like, maybe we should talk more about the candidate. Maybe we should support the candidate.
You'd like to say it, please?
Thank you. So, this is, this way the support is, so when you hear those concerns, consider who's speaking, what they're all about. Please disregard it and do the best you can. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next, Kerry Kellaw.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Rick Porost. I'm here to speak on matter five C, one B regarding Rose Vandover. Rose Vandover, I got to know Rose incredibly well. I'm here for essentially a character reference to speak on behalf of her. We were running mates in the last town council and I'm a member of the Republican Town Committee. And I got to know Rose very well. She was incredibly sweet, incredibly kind, incredibly loving, loves his town, most of the people in it. I've seen her particularly love my own daughter, act like she's an honorable wife, same with my wife, act like she's an honorable wife. By the way, my wife is biracial. And I didn't see any hate prejudice whatsoever from, on Rose. So, I'm here to stand up for her and say that I believe there was no ill intent. There was no harm in her statement. I believe it was a basic oversight. Rose, I just hope with Rose at length today before you come up here because I wanted to hear. I didn't want to continue her higher form on the interview process or this, on Dinwiddie. And Rose, she would be, that she grew up in public housing in the inner city and I'm not sure. I know this is ultra, we're ultra sensitive in terms of words and the town council potentially become a word police, although I was shocked, I was shocked that some of the people who were, came to roaring applause and called my colleague a POS, a racist and was told to F off by people who are in support of the person. So, we're not concerned about kindness and inclusivity and equality. Is that the kind of behavior that people call each other, that public function? I wonder. But I know that she grew up in that. So, to her, the word that she used, I'm very clear she meant no harm. I agree. The word that she, that's a word she grew up in, grew up with. Also, I would also say that Ms. Dinwiddie has quite the resume. She has quite the experience. Yeah, I would imagine ninety percent of these people in town have never heard the term "transracially adopted person." I'm one of the ninety percent that never heard it till tonight and many people back here have never heard the term tonight. So, is it possible that Ms. Dinwiddie comes in here ultra sensitive to the words that are used regarding her and where we draw the line about what we call people, what we don't, when we call them something, when we don't, that when we act inappropriate and out of line, when they're not on public forum and when, so they could go on and on. So, I'm just concerned that's all. My suggestion is we work together, as Mr. Lawler said, work together to find a ground, work together to not be ultra sensitive and ultra dramatized to every word that she used. Yes, now, like my former colleague, Ms. Vandover, said a word and she apologized to Ms. Dinwiddie for using the word. Okay, so she did what she, at the same time, I'm not, we're not expected to apologize for everything that we do, everything we say, just because someone's ultra sensitive about it. Because how do we keep up with the labels? It's every week, it's a new label. And is it possible she defended that, that Rose is a white heterosexual faithful Christian woman? Is it possible of that kind of effect? As far as I know, the white heterosexual faithful person is not usually included in the DEI agenda, from my understanding. That's what we're talking about. So, I, I, Mr. Lawler brought up a great point and so do a couple others. I do believe that's a whole, there needs to be more people involved in the interview process. I think if nothing else can bother that, I think that's brilliant. This is a first-term councillor who would mean no harm towards anyone and I vouch for her in that regard. But I think that is, is important, as well to have that. And I guess the only thing I would say is, this is, this is someone, one of the reasons she actually defeated me in the election is she had worked me a hundred and one. And she studies issues unlike anyone I've ever seen. And this person's a great woman in this job and she blew a fantastic job for this town. And I think we need to look by work releasing people and stand up for a woman of courage, faith, dignity, love and kindness. Thank you for your time. Keep up the great work, Rose.
Everybody, my name is Wesley Dunne, for anyone I had and much like our mother's school committee, our school, anyone in the school committee, I have a right here, private citizen in my office, not reflective of that. So, I'm here to next see on the appointments and liaisons on the review. So, much like everybody else has said, obviously there needs to be a greater role in this place. Well, let's see if the topic of this should have never happened. And the damage that is being done by having this conversation and there's not going to be the appropriate follow-up for both people, people who feel very differently about the conversation that was had. And that is also a part of the issue that we have in this community. Everybody keeps saying, "Well, we have to work together." But these are the conversations that are working together. That if somebody does get offended, you stop for a minute, have the conversation and make a commitment to do better and to learn from it. It is unacceptable. It should not have happened. However, now we're here. And then you still have people who are arguing back and forth about, I don't know what the big deal is. Doesn't seem to have anything to me, but it doesn't directly impact them. And it is hurtful. And somebody in this community is wanting to get seriously hurt if we continue down this path. We not only have to make a commitment that we're going to change policy and that we're going to change protocol around here, but we have got to commit to future generations, we're going to do better and be better. It's not fair for them. It's not fair for the kids that are growing up in this community, that they're watching the way that their adults, that their role models are behaving. Even just the way people hurl insults back and forth in this room. How dare we ask our kids in this community to be any better when that's what we're showing them. And this goes for everyone to just be very conscious of the conversations we have in this room, of how many people are listening, whether they're in this room or they're sitting at home, and has impact. So, I strongly versus counsel to make a commitment that this current sitting council is going to review our policies, review our practices and make sure that no councillor is setting up this situation again. Make sure that no volunteer who is looking to join a committee is put in a position like this again. And make sure something is there for future committees so we do not keep coming back to this. Because every time we come to this, everybody gets activated, everybody shows up, relationships are severed and people don't know how to move forward. We were sitting in the back of this room and people were literally acting like they're children in their room. And again, this is people on both sides of this issue. But then we keep saying, "Well, we just have to learn to respect each other." That's not respecting each other. We've got to have higher standards. And that's what I'm asking. And I just really hope that you can all make that commitment to one another and that you can commit to this town. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Avadjian. I'm a resident of Hopkinton. I just happened to be here by happenstance. And I just wanted to say that language is not just language. The language that we're talking about here tonight is the first step in violence towards the Black and Black community. It will, you know, one thing leads to another if we're okay with the way that we're speaking to each other, if we're okay with naturalized violence. And I just think that everybody needs to do better. You can't decide if you defended somebody. It's up to the other person to decide. And I just think that, you know, although people need to have grace for making mistakes, there needs to be actions that follow that up. Otherwise, it's just going to be two years from now when somebody says something else, that offends somebody else. And I just want to say that intention doesn't always matter. It's the outcome that matters. This is what I should focus on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Adele Dome. I'm on Sixteenth Stink Street, Westerly, Rhode Island. And I don't have any prepared speech. I came to listen. I will tell you that I've known my sister Rose here for fifty-nine years. We grew up in the city of Hartford, right in the center of the city. We had friends who were, and excuse me if I'm not politically correct, friends who were black, Puerto Rican, Spanish, the works, everything. We come from a family of eleven children. To walk through my house on any given day was like coming into a mini United Nations. We're a Christian family. We were raised to love everyone, to accept everyone, for the... We were raised to love everyone, to accept everyone for who they are. Um, and Rose has certainly followed through with that. Um, she has worked very hard here on the town council, she's nipped to it, she's learning. Um, I'm sorry to say that it seems like, and I'm sorry, just doesn't have a lot of weight anymore. Um, somebody who sincerely is sorry for what she said, um, I think she can be reprimanded, uh, but I don't think anything cruel and unusual punishment is due her. Um, she loves this, this town of West Berlin. We have been coming here, uh, like I said, lived in Hartford, been coming here for fifty-nine years. Rose is now her resident divorce. Uh, we love this town, we love the people in it. Rose is very dedicated to being a town counselor, and she has everybody's best intentions. Um, she's a hard worker, she is not into hearing gossip as far as making a decision by hearsay. She digs into the facts, she puts a lot of time and energy into this job. Uh, I've seen her come home with, with binders, information, she goes home, uh, and she does her job well. So um, I just want to put in a good word for Rose, Rose, I love you, and keep up the good work. Thank you so very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Duran, Seventy-Three Shiloh. I just want to say that I'm just so discouraged and so saddened by um people coming and speaking for others. People who say we should just let things go, I don't think it's supposed to be that long. It's not personal, but we have to pay attention to people who are telling you that they are wrong. So that's all I'm saying, I hope that we can do it.
Joy Verio, there's six hours to be West Berlin. I have a few agenda items I'd like to speak on. Um, the last thing I'll say is, um, as Mr. Guardia said, he has three rookies running a nominated committee, and Council Neil Meyer and Healy both have admittedly stated that they chose not to interview Ms. Denny Witty because they knew her, that was wrong. That was wrong, and I'm sorry, and that led to a phone interview with Council Vandover. Um, words matter. I'm a snowflake, I believe in DEI, it's a political issue, whether a person believes that government should be involved in that or not. It's not a racist issue, it's a government, governmental, across the board issue. I understand Counselor Vandover's position, I disagree, I work with her. She does not have a main bone in her body. And I would ask for what everybody else is asking for, accountability, get your committee in order. And number two, a little bit of grace.
Also, you want?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Um, I appreciate the wide variety of meetings that we've heard and the wide number of topics that people have spoken to. It was so encouraging to see this level of encouragement. Um, speaking to the issue that most people have spoken to tonight, I do want to offer my personal apology to April Denny Witty. Uh, this was the committee I was running, and this should never have happened to me. Uh, it shouldn't have happened under my watch, it shouldn't have happened under any circumstances. Um, it was crass, inappropriate, and it was unbecoming of counsel. There's no reason, there's no reason to ask about race during an interview. It's irrelevant qualifications, it opens us up to legal liability, it's, it's just not something that we should be doing. And as for the accountability part, I had asked a solicitor to gather a list of suggestions on how to improve this committee, and the most obvious one, everyone's already said, no more solo interviews. No more solo interviews, no more phone interviews, and all of them in person in front of a panel, because that's the best way to go about it. Um, in terms of personal accountability, later in this meeting, I'm going to refer two counselors um, for formal admonishment by this council. The first is Counselor Vandover for her conduct during the interview. And the second is my subcommittee for promulgating the policies that allowed this to happen in the first place. Um, this is on us, it's on us to fix this. I recognize that, and you have my word, and I'm going to do my best to do so. But again, I'm sorry that it happened in the first place.
I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. I want to say that I'm sorry to Ms. Denny Witty that she felt um words were hurtful. I also want to say I was not privy to the conversation on either side. I don't know how the conversations went. I do appreciate Ms. Vandover for apologizing and taking ownership of saying something that actually hurt somebody. So thank you for giving that, honestly. Um, like Counselor Neil Meyer said, we have to do better. I was part of the appointments committee in the last session, and we always have meetings together. And I think what Counselor Neil Meyer is suggesting as far as always having, you know, a face-to-face meeting is the step in the right direction. And I think it's a learning curve for all of us, words do matter. And just because one person's opinion is a word doesn't mean anything, doesn't mean it doesn't hurt somebody else. You cannot take that away from somebody's feelings. It's just plain and simple, you can call me names and maybe it hurts me, maybe it doesn't. The point is, that's my feelings, and you can't discard my feelings, and I'm not going to let you discard my feelings. So that's all I mean by that, you know? So I appreciate that we have to learn from this. I hope we can put this to rest by doing the right things. I, I'm sorry that people have been hurt by the words that had occurred. I don't think it was malicious intent, but again, I wasn't there, I wasn't witnessing it, I can't speak on any of that. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Also you.
Thank you everyone for coming out today and sharing her words and her wisdom with us. Um, I do respectfully disagree with Counselor Schwab. Um, we do know what happened, we heard from both parties what happened. So we are all here because of you and for you. So before I get into policy and procedure, I really want to just acknowledge the impact that this had, not just on the individual involved, but the entire community. And I also want to extend an additional apology to you, Rose, for just another unfortunate moment that you have to live through to be attempted to be silenced or that you're ever done. I am very happy that we were able to continue listening to you, I do apologize about that moment. When discriminatory or racially charged language is used by anyone, but especially someone in a position of public trust, it causes real harm. It erodes the confidence in our government, and it sends the wrong message about who's welcome here. As a counselor, I believe we do have the responsibility to create that environment where everyone feels safe and respected and heard. And that includes, of course, our volunteers that are stepping up. It's really not enough to say that we value fairness, we really do have to show it through our actions and the standards that we set. So I want to take a moment just to stand back and list out the facts of what happened. A volunteer's turn on the multicultural committee expired. When that happens, they can apply to be reappointed. That application is then sent to the town council appointments subcommittee, which includes three counselors. In this case, two counselors already lead the applicant in both a working environment and a personal environment. They supported her reappointment. One counselor had not met her, and so all three agreed that it would be okay for a one-on-one interview. During that interview, the counselor used a racial slur when asking about the applicant's race. That counselor leader responded to the applicant with an email framed as an apology, admitting to the use of the word, and I do want to acknowledge that. Ms. Vandover could have denied it, minimized it, or worse, but she didn't. That is not commendable. As a counselor, I deeply wish that our legal counsel had been contacted immediately, given the seriousness of the situation. But as a resident and a human being, I can recognize that taking that responsibility, even if imperfectly, matters. However I may feel about the way the apology was written, the fact remains it was sent, and that means something. Regardless of intent, this line of questioning was inappropriate. It crossed possibly illegal, but definitely ethical line. What happened was wrong, just plain and simple. And I do, again, want to extend my apology to Ms. Denny, this should have never happened. So it's important that it never happens again. And how can we prevent that from never happening again? I started by drafting a very simple training ordinance, just a first step toward improving the structure. I shared it with our town council president and our town councilor. Why? Because right now there is no training for counselors on ethics, professional conduct. And I do think that that lack of structure is a gap. We do have ethics that does come in yearly, but it is, it is not mandatory. And at the last one, I believe there was only two counselors present. Now we're seeing a real world consequence of that. Then there's the protocol for the appointments subcommittee, a group that has genuinely worked hard to raise the bar for where things stood before. We have made intentional, we've been intentional about how we schedule interviews. We've made sure that everyone who wants to serve gets a fair shot, even when that was difficult, we stuck to that principle. There were times that we were not all on the same page, but we worked through it, disappointments and all. We looked at the applicants as people, never as party affiliation. For a subcommittee, as mentioned, made up of three newcomers, I honestly really do believe that we did a good job bringing in fresh ideas and structure, and
Do you want to summarize?
That's okay, I'll go later, I don't want you to
Okay.
Thank you.
But another counselor want to speak?
God, give me five minutes, please. Um, I'm just going to couple, couple comments. Joy, I don't know if she's still here, but, and then I'm going to do the, the, you know, what also you came here to talk about, and um, Kelly, mischief. You've always been good, you're very well spoken, you're smart enough not to run again, and I was stupid enough to run again, I think Chris had the same idea. Um, he made some points, I mean, if a word hurts somebody, yeah, it's, it's a word that we can't use, but I'm good, and we have a couple of officers in the house, and some attorneys, I'm just going to make this point. The difference between murder and assault is intent, okay? We heard, we heard Rose's sister come up here tonight and talk about how when you went through a house blown up, I think she was in the United Nations. Rose is my friend, she doesn't have a racist bone in her body. If she had a racist bone in her body, she would be my friend, but she does not, no. And we have to remember that, she, she didn't have the intent to hurt anybody. And uh, she apologized, so, you know, I, I hope, I do agree with some of the policy changes we may need, we may need to have everybody interview, or, or, you know, free people should sit and interview, but uh, please, don't sit here and try to paint Rose Vandover as a racist, it's bullshit, and it's going to be this. And I'm just, I'm going to say one more thing, and uh, to me, very, really April Denny, I don't even know who she was, you know, I've said that times, I mean, most of these committees don't interest me, I don't think I would have cared who was appointed to the multicultural committee or what they do, but because of all this, I took a little bit of an interest in her letter application, and I started to say, who is April Denny? And I found out that, you know, she lived, she listed her address in New York City. She said, my current, I currently live in New York City, I work in New York City. The only thing that makes her to this town is, is a piece of property that she bought. I bet she comes here every couple of months, she makes, I don't know how many days she spends, I guarantee it's not one eighty-three. So, and, and she was staunch Democrat, and I'm starting to understand why the Democrats won all these elections. How many people from New York use an address in West Berlin to vote in our town? I don't know, April Denny, I, I look at your Facebook page, your current city, New York City. So there's only one or two things that could be happening here. She's either committing election fraud or a tax fraud, because I'd love to see a New York state
Order, stop, please!
I don't understand what your point is.
My point is
You're not for my people, you're a professional!
Obviously, you're always talking about West Berlin.
She doesn't do the West Berlin, she doesn't do the West Berlin. So why does she, why does she just, you know, obviously, why does she do all these
Order, order, you're out of order, questioning, questioning the uh
Maybe the point here is a good question.
Question the victim.
Question the victim, what are you talking about?
I'm talking, I'm going to like, I thought I was going to like
God, give me a second.
No, Mr. uh, Peter's over.
Listen, one or two things is happening, and I know the Democrats are pushing the only elections, but it's time to look at this, okay?
All right, your time is up.
What is up?
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
Next counselor that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Counselor Yelich?
So many people spoke tonight, we don't know everybody, but I'm going to touch on just a couple of things. Um, the appointments committee, um, as a committee, I've made a mistake. And, and the chair has admitted to that. Um, if you're going to interview, you interview as a group, and you have a panel. The other option is to abolish the appointments committee and have everybody come before the council. I think that's what it used to be two years ago, and then somebody created the appointments committee. Um, so that's an option. And um, we all make mistakes, we're not making light of anything whatsoever. Um, I think we've all said or done things that have been a mistake, or have offended, or irritated somebody, or annoyed somebody in some way or fashion. And I think Counselor Vandover apologized sincerely. So I think there was a, there was a, a better way for people to handle this if there was continued conflict. If somebody is being interviewed and, and feels a fancy question or conversation, I was approving to it. And, and hopefully the person speaks up and, and address it, so people can, both people can leave their understanding to each other. That's working together, right? Not cyber attacking somebody. So I think this whole process could have been handled much, much better. And, and I know it was long enough, not a meat bone in her body that I seen, or her. And I think she was sincere in the, in the apology. And, and I have to say that hypocrisy from Counselor Healy is unbelievable. And I'll share an email that I was drafting, and amazingly, she sent to a committee member when she was a town committee member. And in my mind, it was ageism, vulgarity. So I'll share that with you. Just to show
Just to show that people who pretend to live on a high horse maybe take it down a notch. Unless true will look together, let's resolve some issues, let's not entrate or create issues or cyber-attack people. And now, I really, you know, and I hope that's the end of this discussion tonight. I'm sure we're going to talk about it. And I'm sure there's a process that can be done for the Appointments Committee. And we're going to keep the Appointments Committee. They interview everybody as a panel. If not, if you're going to abolish them, we've got an idea. Thank you all. And I truly do want to hear from everybody. Goodbye, I'm off.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I just want to touch on short-term wrinkle. Be assured, we will do our due diligence to do our homework and try to figure this out fairly for everyone. As far as the eminent domain question that I had, yes, I was looking for a little bit of a generic answer to that, Mr. Solicitor. So maybe we'll talk about that a little bit later. The one thing I will say is all these meetings that we have, whether it be the Subcommittee Meeting or any other meeting that happens, harbor management, they should all be recorded. Every single board should be, every single meeting should be recorded. That way, there are no questions as to what happened. And so this never, ever, ever happens again to anyone else on either side. That is my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone's spoken. I'll blow my last point up. Five minutes. The, the issue at hand tonight, the most telling issue, is how we treat people and how we judge people. And councillors have a aura about us that we have some authority, which if you've ever served in the council, as Mr. Loder understands, it's just all a show. It's not, it's not real. But that being said, if you're interviewing someone for a job interview and you start talking about race, and I don't know where that comes from, I don't know where that emanates from. Certainly, we can have more classes on that and all. But I don't know where that, that would, that would never be thought to be acceptable. So I first can apologize to Ms. Denwee for what she had to go through. And I want to commend her for appropriating this issue to the podium tonight. And I want to apologize for the antics of this council towards Ms. Denwee. The antics of the podium, some of the podium speakers trying to diminish the events. I do want to thank Ms. Van Doever for her apology. I think that was appropriate. And she did it quickly without reservations. So I want to thank you for that. But we also heard about consequences and how to move on from there. Certainly, an apology is first and foremost. But I think also, looking at the liaison position of being on the Appointments Committee has to be evaluated and potentially remove Ms. Van Doever from the Appointments Committee. I would also like to look at the Appointments Committee and how it operates as Mr. Ne, Councilor Neumeyer has put forth and Councilor Healy has put forth, that there has to be some fundamental changes to the Appointments Committee, to all the committees on how they are conducted. So that we don't have any of these issues raise their ugly head again. You know, we're all, we're all in the same town. We all, we used to all work together. And now it's just, you know, who can insult the other person to their advantage at any, at any time and play, and play these games? We're, the town council is here to do the town's business. This, we're not doing any town business. We're just, we're just sparring at each other. And it's not serving the public. It's not serving ourselves. I don't know one professional organization that I'm part of where this type of antics is tolerated and this type of antics goes on. It's always, no other council above here objects to the, the comments, to the volunteers, to the, to the solicitor, to manager, to other councillors. It's always, you know, who can get more, more of an impact in there? I've never served on a council, a town council like this. It's just, it's, it's an embarrassment to the town. And it's, it's not, it's unwarranted in any way. You can disagree with someone. You can disagree with their views. But you have to be professional. You have to be civil about it. You just can't constantly make it a cheap shot, trying to run for the next election. We're here to serve the people. We're here, here to, to help the town. Nothing that we're doing tonight is helping the town. The most that we can do is apologize to Ms. Denwee for what she had to go through at that interview, for what she had to go through tonight. It's just not right. It's not right for Westerly. That concludes the council's response.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcus Levine. I've been here in Westerly. I've been here that already. Oliver, I am remiss. I didn't greet you all properly. President DeHale, respected councillor, town manager Lacy, Solicitor Connolly, Doytobal White, Town Sergeant Palacone, Captain and Chief. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Fellow citizens and guests. Just going to speak very, very quickly on item nine C. Much of it has been covered. I find it very, very refreshing to watch what's told. On one hand, we can't even begin to think about pushing back on federal law and state law when we're asking questions that seem to indulge in timber, do the same thing when it comes to immigration. Fascinating. Climate? Some of us go from hands-off to no kings? Anti-Ice? Watered-down kind of aversion from what we hear from House Representative Sanchez in Rhode Island Legislature? Some of the turmoil is being spread around up there. And then national? This is a time that we need to trust in the integrity of our law enforcement and the rest of our exposed emergency services community. Because they deal with issues as well as teaming together. And they're all caught in the backlash. And it's very, very interesting. It's nice to know that perhaps things might not have been understood as intended or intended as was understood. And the apologies are good. In light of all the other discussions about apologies tonight, this was an entire community. Was that enough? Upholding due process. If ICE is involved with anybody and we use assistance from the police department, chances are that due process was not followed when someone came here. What makes us think that due process is due on the other end? They're just doing a job. As bristly and ugly as it may have to be, they're doing a job. They're following the procedures. If people have followed procedures and fallen along the right path, they won't necessarily need to worry about if ICE is in town or not. So support our police. I think it's very, very important, especially with this. It does get to be difficult. And as far as how some people may think that this is not the way that we want to shape the town and how we want to do it? I think the town overall is in pretty good shape. I don't think we need to be shaped with the policies that ICE has or elsewhere in the state. Let's concentrate on what's good for Westerly, good for everybody that's here, and good for everybody that makes this town run. It might not be well-oiled for shame, and none of us are perfect. But on the other hand, I think that everybody involved is doing a great job with the best of intentions and concerns. But especially with what's going on from coast to coast right now, I really do think that we need to force clear, unquestionably, support of law enforcement. And the administration allows them to do what they need to do, sometimes under conditions that are unfavorable and unpleasant for everybody involved. And as the author of the original resolution that I drew in parallel, the reasons may be not valid because of dates. That had been pushed back five times since March, starting with the expression by that man, four times by myself and other times by town councillors. And why? Was it to delay everything until the vote up on Federal Hill was done? Seemingly so. The people in Westerly were once again ignored by the state legislature? Nice work. Thank you.